Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for this candidate forum sponsored by the Metro West Daily News and the League of Women Voters of Framingham. This is for District One candidates Christine Long and Joe Norton. My name is Stephanie Dealey. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters here in Framingham, and we're so happy that you're here to join us or watching us live on Facebook. We're also recording this for broadcast on public access as soon as we have the recording finished. So let me start out with a few things most of you probably know. Seven of the 11 district council seats in Framingham are up for reelection. We are hosting candidate forums for all of those seven races. On October 10th, we did District Two and Nine. Those are now available for viewing either on the League's Facebook page or on public access here in Framingham. The public access recording is better than the Facebook, so I would encourage you to watch that one. On next Sunday, October 27th, we'll be speaking with candidates for district council in districts Five and Seven here at the costume room. And on Monday, October 28th, we'll be doing the three candidates for the at-large district councils, as well as the candidates running for District Nine. You can find specifics about all these events on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. As the League always says, "Democracy is not a spectator sport. It works best when everyone participates." So we encourage you to use your voice, which is your vote, on November 5th and take part in the elections. You want to elect the person who best represents your views, and the only person who can do that is you. So please take the time to vote on November 5th. Let me go over just a few logistics for today's event. We ask everyone to either shut off or mute their cell phones. We also ask that you hold your applause till the end of the event, which will allow us to ask more questions of the candidates. There are index cards on the back table just about under the clock up there. Nicole's holding them up. We are taking questions from the audience, written questions only. If you have a question, please hold the card up once you've written on it. One of us will collect it. We will then review them only to make sure they're not a duplicate of a question we're already scheduled to ask and pass them to the moderator. We will not have time to ask every question that comes in, I would suspect. So we'll do our best, though, to get to everything that's asked. Candidates are given a two-minute opening statement, one minute to respond to questions, rebuttals at the discretion of the moderator only. There's a one-minute closing statement for each candidate also. We flipped a coin to see who would go first. So Christine Long is doing the opening statement first, and Joe Norton will do the closing statement first. I'm now going to turn this over to Jim Pillsbury, who's the voter service chair for the League of Women Voters of Framingham. And again, thank you all for being here.
No applause. Can't do that. Ladies and gentlemen, we are pleased to have Elizabeth Foster-Nolan, who lives in Weymouth and is a member-at-large of the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts. She currently serves as director for the League of Women Voter Massachusetts. She chairs the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and is the chair of the newly-formed Voter Engagement Moderator Subcommittee. Elizabeth is a recovering lawyer and a professional development leader. Elizabeth has been moderating local and congressional debates since being trained by the League of Women Voters Massachusetts in 2010. Ladies and gentlemen, Elizabeth Foster-Nolan.
Thank you. I am pleased to be here. I appreciate it. Just a couple of things. I think everybody knows the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts is a nonpartisan organization. We advocate for issues. We do not endorse any candidate. And we believe strongly in voter education, and a key part of that is the forums that are held. And I give huge kudos to Framingham for the number of forums that they are doing. It's not an easy task to pull all of this together. And I will move right on, but just so you know, the timers are right up here. Thankless job, but thank you to them. They will give the warnings to the speakers for when their time is getting close. They will have a stop. If either of our candidates is in the middle of sentence, I will let them finish it. I will then say thank you, and we will move on. I do not abruptly cut them off. But we do want to keep to the timeframe so that we can move this along and everybody gets the opportunity to speak. We will also alternate who goes first on each question, just so everybody has a chance. So with that, I think we will start with Ms. Long for your opening statement.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hello, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voter, Metro West Daily News, and for all of you for attending today. My name is Christine Long. I'm your current planning board chair. I'm pleased to be here today to answer questions about why I'm running for district city council. The question most people ask me is why I would give up the chair of the planning board to run for city council. My answer is simple. I need to be where my skill set is best applied. Becoming a city has changed many things. The city council is now responsible for the final vote on all budget and zoning ordinances, as well as setting policy for this community. These functions are complex, and they have major long-term impacts. With seven of 11 seats to be decided, there's only one void that I can fill. No other candidate has my deep knowledge and expertise in planning and zoning. Instead of remaining on the planning board in an advisory role, I'm stepping up to serve as a voting member of the council, where I think my skill set can better serve you and represent you directly by impacting outcomes. I've served for over two decades in key leadership roles in both the town and city government structures. I take on tough issues, get favorable results, and I'm not afraid to take a position and defend it. I care deeply about the success and quality of life in Framingham. This election is very important. Your vote is very important. Definite impacts on future decisions will occur as a result of your vote. I work as a capital asset manager and a state procurement officer in Newton. My skills are unique and strong, and my standards are high. I take on tough issues to find the best solutions free of conflicts from any involvement in land use activities. I maintain a Puritan work ethic in all I do. I get things done. I pledge to continue to focus on resident interests first, being effective and vocal neighborhood advocate, maintain total transparency and open communication, find collaborative solutions to issues. You'll never have to doubt my loyalties. Your trust matters, and integrity matters. You can count on me, and I hope I can count on your support on November 5th.
Thank you. Mr. Norton.
Hi, I'm Joe Norton. I'm your neighbor. I grew up here. I went to school here. I took care of my elderly parents here. I'm raising my two children, Shay and Hannah, here, and I plan to stay here. I've always been involved in our community as a town meeting member, on the zoning board of appeals, on the planning board. I ran a family business in town for years, and I'm involved in our schools. I'm a single dad. My kids are the most important thing to me. And as a result, I engaged in our schools not just as a parent, but also in leadership positions on the PTO boards at Hemman Way Walsh, and currently as the PTO citywide co-president. In addition to running our family business, I held numerous executive positions in the corporate world and spent six years in the Middle East. I feel this business, municipal, and school experience has helped prepare me for our city councillor position. My parents instilled in our whole family good core values, a strong work ethic, and the commitment to serve the community. The real preparation for this position occurred at an early age, growing up as the youngest of seven boys. I've always been the glue of the family. I bring everyone together. I listen to differing opinions and find a resolution that works for everybody. This is how I work on the PTOs, the ZBA, the planning board, and it's how I will work with other city councillors and with our mayor. I've met our neighbors face-to-face to listen and to learn. I understand the needs of residential taxpayers, our schools, and the business community. I know how important collaboration, listening, and being accessible is to the future of Framingham. Please vote for me, Joe Norton, for city councillor in District One on November 5th.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the question and answer portion of the forum. Just a reminder, this is 60 seconds for each answer, and we will again alternate, and we will start with Mr. Norton. And the first question, and if you need me to repeat it, happy to repeat it. What is the most important issue facing your district? What is the most important issue facing the city as a whole?
In preparing for running for city council, I walked the neighborhoods. I met people face-to-face, and you learn a lot when you're engaging with people. In District One, I've found that the preservation of open space, creating livable communities, et cetera, seems to be the most important issue. As you move to District, or Precinct Two, the schools come to, you know, are probably the first subject that people talk about. In addition to that, you've got affordability, you know, controlling municipal spending, et cetera. And then in our district and citywide, the number-one thing that everybody talks about is traffic. And I plan to address all four of these as your city councillor.
Ms. Long.
So district-wide, I would say safety is becoming an issue that is very current. All of a sudden, District One, over the last week or two, is becoming highlighted in District One. As far as the whole citywide, safety still continues to be an issue, and we are working with the police department directly on these issues. However, District One, I would say traffic and open space come hand-in-hand, and those are definitely at the top of the list that need to be resolved in District One. But it's also is a citywide issue, the traffic throughout in development, how we're going to continue to develop. Preservation of open space is one of the things I'm most concerned about, which I've been promoting, CPA, throughout the city, which is coming forward through the council. It has finally reached that level. So I think the preservation of open space, traffic, development, and safety are the biggest concerns throughout the city, and focusing on District One.
Thank you. Ms. Long. The bulk of open space is in your district, District One. Do you think Framingham needs to make an effort to establish more open space in other districts? And if so, how would you propose doing that?
So as I just said, CPA, which is Community Preservation Act, which was turned down some years ago because of percentage would be the way that I would want to approach this. I am a big advocate at this point because the match going into 2020, I believe, is 30 percent by the state if we do adopt a Community Preservation Act. It will be a de minimis amount of tax projected to the taxpayer, and it's necessary. And we do have multiple open space parcels throughout the city that need to be preserved. So instead of always having to get turned down and being able to see parcels like the golf course, like Bethany, which potentially could come under loss for us, and other different large parcels like the Eastly Farms, then we need to think about how we're going to preserve it, and CPA is the best way to do that.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. The bulk of open space is in your district, District One. Do you think Framingham needs to make an effort to establish more open space in other districts? And if so, how would you propose doing that?
So open space is more than just wide-open fields. It's making a livable community. Over the last 10 or 12, 15 years, we've lost Eastly. We're losing Fafford. We're losing Millwood, the RCS School. All of these projects have been approved. There's nothing been discussed about sustainability on any of those projects. There's no solar. There's no, you know, alternative fuels. The protection of open space can be done through the community, the CPA, which Ms. Long just mentioned. But in our planning and our zoning, we can put in changes to our laws that just require certain things like sustainability.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Norton. Would you support changing the required vote on zoning from two-thirds to a majority?
I would not. I believe that zoning changes are something that need to be thought of very carefully, and I don't think there's any benefit to rushing things or getting things passed. I think the two-thirds majority makes sense. I mean, the two-thirds vote makes sense.
Ms. Long.
So that issue is supposedly coming up for a vote in November by the state legislature, and it may not be an option for each community to opt out of it. If the legislature does adopt that, then we are going to be subject to everything being by right. For me, I'd rather have a four-fifths vote because it gives you the option under a special permit, which would be the only time you use a four-fifths vote, to be able to put conditions on property, make sure that they're permitted properly, make sure that all of the issues that need to be protected, whether it's open space, or traffic, or circulation, or any of the multiple issues that a special permit would cover, as far as how many bedrooms on a unit on a piece of parcel of land could be used. So I would not be in favor of getting rid of the special permit or the majority vote because a simple majority makes it by right, and we have no control.
Thank you. Ms. Long. Student enrollment has topped 9,000 this year in Framingham schools. We are seeing several new apartment developments, which will likely increase student enrollment. Increases in the number of residential properties requires increases in many city programs, including fire, police, and school. How would you address these additional expenses?
So with all development comes additional services. However, all development also brings additional increase to taxes, especially apartments, even though it's a residential use, it's still considered a commercial use. So those additional taxes under commercial will cover some of those costs. Over time, the return on your investment on these projects will end up, you'll end up getting a return on investment, but it's over time. So how I would address that? I think we need to look at our zoning more carefully, and as far as what we should be redistricting or rezoning, I should say, so that we can control more of the uses that go on throughout the city. Right now, we have mixed use, and you've seen the influx of apartments, but maybe it's time to start thinking about some sort of short-term moratorium also, to be able to take a step back and think about what we're doing before we keep going with this.
Thank you. Mr. Norton.
Again, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Student enrollment has topped 9,000 this year in Framingham schools. We are seeing several new apartment developments, which will likely increase student enrollment. Increases in the number of residential properties requires increases in many city programs, including fire, police, and school. How would you address these additional expenses?
As Ms. Long said, the increase in these apartments actually increases our tax revenues. It also adds to the vibrancy of the community. I would not support a moratorium on apartments. However, I do think that we need to watch closely and use the powers that the planning board has to control this development. I've been, I spoke to Bob Tremblay, our superintendent, about this issue because he's concerned about the added number of people entering the schools. And one thing that he had requested was on projects over a certain size, if we could have basically an offset, basically a payment to the district to help alleviate the cost of new schools and that type of investment in the community. So...
Thank you. Mr. Norton. Neighbors of Eastly Farms are trying to halt the development of a cannabis-growing operation on that property in your district. What is your position on this issue, and why?
I feel that saving Eastly Farm was the call for everybody two years ago, and this use of the farm to grow cannabis inside of a large building with no alleged impacts to the neighborhood is kind of the best of both worlds. I support the project there, and I feel that the residents and neighbors have come to the planning board meetings. They've given their point of view. We've made changes to the project to accommodate some of that. And overall, I think it's a great use for the farm, and it saves what we've been looking for. It saves, it's one way we've creatively been able to save the farm.
Ms. Long.
So the neighbors that are appealing the project have the right to do that under Mass law. As far as I'm concerned, the project, marijuana laws by the state and by what Framingham adopted allows issues on this property. As far as whether I feel it's the best use, or the worst use, or neutral use, I have heard the neighbors concerned. I'm concerned with some of their concern. However, the planning board only had so much allowance for what we could do with the permit because it was basically at a by right, again, use for the property. So I know that the issue was trying to save Eastly Farm, and perhaps it may be the best use, but my concern is future more development on this farm. Does this mean that maybe there's still going to be more development because the owner of the property has not agreed to do an APR on the property? So I have concern for future development beyond this.
Thank you. Ms. Long. The impact of climate change is a worldwide issue. Would you support installing solar panels on all municipal buildings in the next five years? Why or why not?
I definitely would support that. I know that this has been something that was considered by the former town manager. This issue had started. I think they were doing investigation or feasibility study to see if we could actually install them on our properties. So I would support it, and I would continue to support it. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer because climate change, look at the way the climate is. Every day, it's hot, cold. You never know whether it's winter, summer, or fall anymore. So definitely, there's an issue with climate change going on, and anything we can do to capture solar power is fine with me.
I think that the community needs to lead by example. If we build a new school, it should have solar on the roof. If we build a new library, it should have solar or alternative energy on the roof. We haven't been doing this in the last 10 years, and we need to begin to practice what we preach. Everybody talks about sustainability, but then we keep building buildings that are not sustainable. So in addition to putting elements into our zoning bylaws requiring more sustainability in developments, I think the city has to take the first step. We should have a solar fleet of cars, I mean, an electric fleet of cars, and we should have solar on our buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Norton. Framingham is considering adopting the Community Preservation Act, which both of you have discussed. It will require financial support via property taxes up to 3 percent. Do you support adopting the CPA?
I support adopting a CPA. As far as the percentage and the tax impact, that's something that needs to be discussed.
Ms. Long.
So as I stated previously, formally, we had presented the CPA years ago on town meeting at 3 percent, which was the deal breaker. So I don't believe any taxpayer is going to want a CPA at 3 percent at this time, so I would support the CPA, but it has to be crafted so that it's affordable to the taxpayers and it makes sense for everybody because it does absolutely preserve historic preservation, park and recreation land, open space, and affordable housing. So it's used for four different things, so it would be, you know, smart for us to adopt this, but maybe at a 1 percent tax to the residents, but not a 3 percent.
Thank you. Ms. Long. Not unique to Framingham, hatred, distrust, whatever you want to really call it, for those considered different from other people within the community is on the rise. How would you, as a district councillor, address this issue on a citywide basis?
That's not an easy question, how you address that as a councillor. I think, I mean, I don't even know how, I really don't know how I would address that. I think that we have to promote respectful discourse as councillors. We have to promote discourse that's respectful to one another through the mayor's office, through the public, and I think that in itself provides a good example for the rest of the community to also be respectful. So it works both ways, but I also think that it's horrible to think that there's so much hate out there, just because someone's different, whether you have a disability, whether it's mental or physical, or whether you're a different color or a different race. And I just think that we all need to practice what we preach and try to be more kind to one another.
Thank you. Mr. Norton.
Again, just update the, give me a refresher on the question?
Yep. Not unique to Framingham, hatred, distrust, dislike for those considered different is on the rise. How would you, as a district councillor, address this issue on a citywide basis?
Well, it's funny. I agree with Ms. Long. This is a difficult question to answer as a city councillor. I think that being accepting to other groups is important, holding forums. We just had an incident, or two incidents, in the last couple of weeks, and they're trying to get the community together to discuss the differences, to discuss what's happened, and educate people on just how to get along. I mean, there shouldn't be this discourse. There's a north-south divide. There's racial divide. There's education divide. There's, you know, the city is divided in many ways, and there's no reason for that. We're one Framingham. And, you know, regardless of what color they are or religion they are, this shouldn't be something that any community should have to deal with. So...
Thank you. Mr. Norton, a bit of, kind of on a follow-up to the last difficult question, sorry, but it's an audience question, so I want to be bringing some of these in. Often, things can be contentious at hearings. There have been times at hearings when citizens' voices have not been heard. They've basically been told, "Sit down, do not speak." That can sometimes lead to lawsuits within the community. How would you avoid this type of hearing happening within Framingham?
Oh, I'm a firm believer in listening to what people say. I think a better project, in the case of zoning board or planning board, is the result of listening to the residents, listening to the applicants, and listening to the other board members. There should be nobody told to sit down and shut up. It's just not the way to run a meeting. It's not the way to run a board, and it's not the way to run a community. All voices should be heard, whether it's religious differences, or whether it's somebody that lives next to a project. Their opinion matters. Their position matters. So when I run a board, I run it the way I grew up in my family, listening to everybody's opinions, coming up with a resolution out of that, out of those differing opinions. I'm the listener, and I'm the glue.
Ms. Long.
So I think this question was taken out of context because it seemed to be totally directed at me. So we've had many contentious planning board meetings, and when you're trying to run a meeting and you have probably 100 people in the room, and you have planning board members, and you have consultants, and you have your applicants in front of you, sometimes neighbors don't always respect the board, respect the developers, respect the applicant. And I think that unfortunately, sometimes you have to ask people to sit down when they're being out of order. So I think to run a meeting, it takes a lot of skill, and it takes a lot of patience and a lot of understanding of where everybody's coming from. Emotions can run high, but you also understand that boards have to be run in an orderly fashion. So no one's ever told to shut up and sit down. People are asked to sit down if they're out of order because they're yelling at an applicant or they're being disrespectful.
Thank you. We'll give you a little easy one.
Disrespectful.
Parking for downtown business in City Hall is an issue. How would you propose, what would you propose to be done to address this issue? Ms. Long.
So I think we need to think about where we're going to, we need to build parking garages. Are either underground or reuse some of our, repurpose some of our property and find a way to build some parking garages. Because right now, with all these apartments coming in, there's barely enough parking for the apartments, people that are going to occupy them. And my concern is what's going to happen to the commercial businesses downtown that aren't going to have any reason to come here because they have no place to park their patrons. So we need to find either areas where we can build a parking lot, or think about that in terms of how we're going to deal with that. But that would be my option because project by project, you permit it with parking, but now we're running out of space for parking.
So parking downtown is obviously an issue. The simple solution may be to look at a parking garage, but I think there are other ways of addressing parking issues. There are lots of smart technologies with a cellphone. You go to some communities, you have an app on your phone, and it tells you where there are open parking spots. There are a lot more spots... There are a lot more spots in the perimeter of downtown than we know about. And having a smart app to direct us to them would keep us from having to build another structure in Framingham like the one we built 30 years ago that nobody uses. And another thought would be to tear down the Danforth Building, which is just sitting vacant, and make a municipal parking lot. But I think we need to look at all of these solutions to alleviate the parking issues downtown.
Thank you. Keeping on the downtown subject, there are several empty business locations in Framingham. There is also a need for more space for housing for city of Framingham offices. Do you think the city should buy more properties to house city offices? Or do you support renting space as we currently do at the Perrini Building? Why? Mr. Norton?
I don't support, well, I support purchasing the Perrini Building, but the question is what, at what price? I think that the, I do believe that that would be a great place to have both the school department and the city offices all in one place with that ample parking and a safe, accessible building. And then the Memorial Building, we could repurpose as something, or more of a civic building for performances, the arts, et cetera. I forgot the second half of the question, but that's okay.
Basically, it was why.
Yeah, so that's it. I don't know about renting the building. I think the city should purchase the building. And I think that it's better to consolidate the city offices in one place instead of having a public works kingdom and a school kingdom and a, you know, planning kingdom or what have you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
There is no planning kingdom.
It's in the basement.
Yeah, we got kicked to the basement again, so definitely, I think that from a construction point of view, whoops, I'm sorry. Anyway, from my point of view, I think we should be purchasing a building and repurposing buildings that we have that are sitting vacant, whether we raise them, redevelop them. I don't, I just don't see the purpose of spending money on leasing buildings when we should just straight out buy them because we need the space. Memorial Building is not really appropriate for the town offices or the city offices at this point. It hasn't been for a long time. I was on the Memorial Building Committee when we were discussing that years ago and they opted to do nothing at that time. But at some point, I mean, we're already running out of space. So to me, buy the Perrini Building and start repurposing the Memorial Building. Lease it out for activities, community space.
Thank you. Would you tell us one thing you would do to increase the vitality and appeal of downtown Framingham? Ms. Long?
Well, we're working on it. So I think the CB District, as much as the things I didn't like about the new zoning on CB, has absolutely helped a lot to revitalize downtown. 75 Conker Street actually does make quite a statement when you go downtown and has changed the way the downtown looks, but I think that we need to do more with our small businesses to work with them, to try to help build them with our downtown coordinator and try to continue to revitalize. I know we've done streetscaping, we're doing a lot of improvements down there, so I think we just need to continue with what we've been doing.
I agree with Ms. Long on this. The vitality of downtown is important and, you know, regardless of what we feel about the number of apartments going into downtown, I was at the Alt Union House opening the other day, and it didn't feel like you were in Framingham anymore. I mean, I've been in downtown Framingham for 30, 40 years, and you can see the shift towards a different type of community. There were hundreds of young people there, the type of people that are going to go to Jack's Abbey or, you know, any of the local restaurants that are opening up. There's been a huge change, the streetscape looks better, it's brighter, it's whiter, it's more welcoming. When I say whiter, I mean the lights. And I think that we need to continue that, you know, and we're on the right path.
Thank you. The operating budget for the city of Framingham continues to increase every year. Do you think the budget is too high or too low? What areas are overfunded or underfunded, in your opinion? Mr. Norton?
Could you repeat that once?
Sure. The operating budget for the city of Framingham continues to increase every year. Do you think the budget is too high or too low? What areas are overfunded or underfunded, in your opinion?
My personal taxes have gone up, you know, 40, 50% in the last eight or 10 years. It's becoming very difficult for people to stay in their homes if they're on limited income, so, and that's all based on our tax burden. And so if we look at our budget, I think all of the budgets could be cut without impacting services. We have lots of duplicate services, you look at, I think, I was in a meeting, the police department has 75 vehicles assigned to them, but there's only seven vehicles on the road protecting our citizens. There's a public works truck for every purpose in the world, bright yellow trucks with chrome wheels running through the community all over the place. I think our, you know, we can look at each and every budget and make cuts without impacting services.
Ms. Long?
So I agree with Mr. Norton on this one. So for me, I feel that my tax goes up $400 every single year. They say, "Oh, you're only going to get a minimal increase." Well, for some reason, my house, my taxes are already at $8,000. So it seems to me, I don't know how anybody's going to afford to continue to live here if the taxes just keep going up and up and up. So I believe, and I really believe this, that non-essential services can be cut, or personnel, rather, and the city can still function fine. As far as DPW goes, all their trucks are pretty old, by the way. So they look new because Mr. Sellers does a fabulous job taking care of all of his equipment. I think DPW, the police department is doing a good job. I think the fire department, I just think that we need to cut the budget somewhere and stop the increase in taxes every single year.
Thank you. The police chief has indicated there are serious staffing issues in his department. Are you concerned about the operations of the police department? Why or why not? And what changes would you propose making? Ms. Long?
So we just met with the police department, the police chief in Nobscot last Wednesday, and he explained the whole litany of the dilemma they're in with the amount of police officers that aren't able to work yet because they're either being, they're in training, or they're out on leave, or they're on military leave. And there's a lot of struggle with the police department. However, they do have a plan going forward once all these police academy recruits are finally able to come online and to work with the community better. But yes, we have a lot of challenges and what I would like to see is to strengthen and work with them to strengthen the department and give them what they need. Because we definitely have a rise in crimes of opportunity, in Nobscot particularly, that's just recently occurred, and I want to make sure that those are addressed with neighborhood watch groups.
I, so I've gone to these meetings as well. My brother John was a police officer in Framingham for 34 years. I've been involved with the police department for years. I think that we've got a number of issues that we need to address. One, we're 20 to 30 officers short. That's not just because we didn't hire officers. There's a morale issue in the police department and they weren't getting paid as much as you can get paid in another department. So if you're sergeant in Framingham, you can switch to Webster and make more money and do far less work. This low morale comes from, you know, trying to do the right thing as an officer on the beat, and you get sued by parents and you get sued by, oh, you get in trouble with their superior officers. I mean, these guys, they try to do the right thing and they're constantly being hit. Downtown businesses looking to hire a private police department and neighborhoods having to do community watches, that's not policing. We need to have police presence in the communities.
Thank you. Recycling has become a very expensive piece of the budget for Framingham and all communities, and contamination is a big part of this issue. What would you propose Framingham do to control those costs to the best of your ability?
So I think, my, I have a 25-year-old son who's very into recycling and sustainability, and I, he tries to educate me every time I put something into the trash or into the recycling bin. And I think that's what this is all about. We need to, we need to educate the citizens, the residents. I don't know the answers of, you know, if I pull something out, I don't know if it's recyclable. Is the straw recyclable or is that trash? It's educating the residents to know what to do, or else when we contaminate our recycling and then send it to China and it's not accepted, it just costs us money. So again, it's all a matter of education.
Ms. Long?
Right. So this question came up last time, and what DPW has done, which I give them kudos for, is they've sent out different mailers, whether it be in your tax bill or different type of mailers, but they've explained what is, what you can and cannot put in your trash and what you can and cannot put in your, you know, for recycling. So the problem is that people are putting plastic bags that can't go in recycling that need to be thrown out or returned to the grocery store. It's contaminating the recycle that they're sending to China, and now China's not even taking it. But we not only pay to send it there, but then we're getting fined and we have to pay when it comes back. So the problem is, we need to have either meetings where we can educate people, as they do on the state level, because I've gone to seminars for that at work, to educate people what can and what cannot go into a recycle bin. And I think that is really the only way we're going to be able to protect that.
Thank you. Ms. Long? Are you in favor of Framingham adopting a welcome immigrants ordinance, similar to the Safe Communities Act proposed at the state level? Why or why not?
Well, why wouldn't you want to be a welcoming community? So, I mean, if we go back to hate speech and hate crimes and not being, not having good discourse, this kind of all fits into, you know, being a welcoming community. So just because somebody is of a different color or a different race or a different sexual proclivity, it's, why should you not be welcoming? So I would have to say that I would be in favor of coming up with something to be a welcoming community.
Mr. Norton?
I agree with that. I mean, Framingham is a welcoming community already, and the question is, what is this legislation and what does it actually provide? I think that Framingham needs to be welcoming, whether it's to people of color, different religions, et cetera. We talked about this before. We also need to be welcoming to businesses. We need to create this community that everybody feels comfortable in and that is a vibrant, energetic community. I really don't know the details of what this welcoming community legislation is, and I think that we should look into it a little bit more closely, and I agree with being welcoming.
Thank you. Mr. Norton? As Framingham is dealing with balancing open space with development, do you see communities that are good role models that you would want to look at and perhaps use some of their ideas for Framingham?
So as I said before, open space is, I lump that in with a livable community that has, that's vibrant, that has open spaces to walk, you know, you walk your dog or you go on a hike or what have you. But also, the places that are developed should be a comfortable place to live, have benches and, you know, bike lanes and that type of thing. So other communities that have done this, and as far as rejuvenating their downtowns or rejuvenating the city, I look at Marlboro, I look at Hudson, both of them have great bike lanes, they have lots of activities for people, they've preserved areas of the community. So I think we need to look to them, but I think we're on the right track with some of this, and we need to do more to save so that we don't lose Eastleigh, we don't lose Hanson, the way we've lost Donovan and, you know, Drudge Farm and everything else over the last 30 years.
Ms. Long?
So I think as far as modeling Framingham, it's hard to model Framingham against another community because there's so many communities that aren't similar to Framingham. So Plymouth, Marlboro, Quincy's actually similar to us. I think that if we're going to take a modeling program of another community, I would, Natick does a great job, but Natick's not really similar to Framingham. So Waltham, I would not want to model after Waltham because I go through there frequently and it's very difficult traveling through there, and I just don't like Waltham in general. But as far as the way that community's developed, I think if I had my druthers and I was able to model a community, I'd like the way Natick has been developing itself. But again, it's not similar to our community. Marlboro probably is more similar and has done a good job with preserving open space and doing development and taking care of all their other essential needs.
Thank you. As both of you said previously, traffic seems to be one of the top three concerns for residents of Framingham. What ideas would you bring to the table to address these concerns? Ms. Long?
Oh, I always get the easy questions first. So traffic is going to have to be addressed with the second phase of the traffic study that we started already. The first phase was baseline information. Second phase of the traffic study that DPW studied, or their study, has to be funded. So I want that funded. I know it's an expensive proposition, but without that funding, without that information to understand how we're going to fix the traffic problem, I could not possibly answer that question. No one could answer that. Because with development comes traffic, but we need to have some sort of unified plan because we are a cut-through community. So we're the recipient of every cut-through that goes from every community through Framingham, and that is the biggest problem. So we need to be co-opting with the state, with Mastod, with surrounding communities, how we're going to solve this problem. It's not that simple.
The charter that was passed two years ago included a traffic commission, which has been pretty much ineffective and underfunded. I think that we need to get that traffic commission engaged. I think that we, you know, there's been some work to redesigning roads to alleviate traffic, the Nobscot intersections next on the slate to be rebuilt, which is going to be a nightmare for several years, but the long-range plan is to make it a better intersection. We need to do that throughout the community. I think that the main issue is that in my driveway at home, we had one car there in 1950. There are now four cars in the driveway of everybody's home. And those additional cars are a burden on our, on our streets, which were designed 100 years ago when, you know, everybody didn't have four cars. I think that public transportation, our Metro West regional transit could be expanded, include some of the local businesses that offer shuttles. And in general, we need to live, work, and play in a village so that you don't need as much vehicle traffic.
Thank you. Guess what?
What?
We're done.
We have one more question.
What time is it?
If elected, what committee would be your first choice to serve on? Mr. Norton?
I, I think it's a little premature to look at that. I would look to see what the makeup of the new council is. There's seven of the 11 are new people, and I would be willing to serve wherever my talents would be most needed. I obviously have interest in education, planning, zoning, but I believe just, let's look at the council, see what the makeup is, and go from there.
Ms. Long?
Thank you. That was a really good answer, by the way.
You can use that.
I can use that?
Yep.
Jito. So actually, obviously, I'd probably want to be on the Planning and Zoning Committee, but finance is also one of my strong suits and one of my interests, so those two things. And again, depending on the makeup of the council and who has strengths and who doesn't have strengths, and to figure out where the best use of each one of our individual talents would be placed would be the best idea, but I still think I'm a perfect fit for planning and zoning economic development.
Thank you. We will now move on to your closing statements, which are done in the reverse order of your opening statements. So, Mr. Norton, you will start first with your closing statement, and you have one minute for your closing statement. Time's up.
Okay. Thank you for coming and for watching the forum recorded. I want to leave you with a pledge that as your city councillor, my door will always be open to you. I have a track record of working openly and cooperatively with our residents, local businesses, and the community leaders to achieve the best results. The future of our open space in the villages of Nobscot and Saksville is a vital concern to all of us. With my background in real estate, zoning, and planning, I will work with the mayor and the rest of the council to encourage smart growth. With your help, we will balance- With your help, we will balance redevelopment, save open space, and encourage local businesses that benefit our neighborhoods. Growing our economic base grows money for our schools and quality of life. I will keep Framingham affordable, seniors will be able to stay in their homes, and young families can put down roots in our neighborhoods. I'm uniquely qualified to be your city councillor, and I'm the candidate who will listen and build consensus to move us forward. You are my friends and my neighbors, together we'll move Framingham forward. Please vote for me, Joe Norton, for city councillor in District 1 on November 5th.
Ms. Long?
Thank you for coming. I respectfully ask for your support and your vote on November 5th for our city council. Most of you already know me as the planning board chair, and have seen me at work for the past two decades in many capacities. Everything I do has been out in the open, and is transparent for everybody to see. You know you can always count on me by reaching out on an issue, and I will gladly discuss it with you, listen, and come up with a solution. As your councillor, there will be no hidden agendas, no surprises. You must already know that you, beginning a councillor, dedicated and committed to being transparent, both on and off camera, without changing my opinion when I'm speaking to somebody else. I have outstanding qualifications and expertise needed in municipal matters that I will continue to use to do what's best for Framingham. I take my work seriously, since it's important work. I say what I mean, I listen, I gather the facts, I am willing to compromise to reach solutions. This is what we need on the city council now, so I respectfully, again, ask for your vote and support on November 5th.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your participation in this democratic process, the forum. The League of Women Voters greatly appreciates it, helping to educate all of the voters in your ward. I always end my forum with a couple of things. Yes, please vote. More importantly, if you know neighbors who can't get to the polls, friends who can't get to the polls, please, offer them a ride. Additionally, absentee ballots are in fact going to be available, check with your town clerk. So if you're not going to be in town, make sure you get an absentee ballot. There really is no excuse not to vote. I am a diehard on that. As was said at the beginning of the forum, democracy is not a spectator sport. And unfortunately, local elections, when there is not a national election attached to it, we don't see great voter turnout. But think about it, who's spending your money? It's your local elections, so thank you very much, it was a very courteous audience, there were very courteous candidates, not that I expected anything less from Framingham. So again, thank you very much, and I think now is when everybody can give these candidates a thank you round of applause. And I think Jim has a couple of housecleaning messages for you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you very much for coming out all the way from Waymouth. Excellent job. I want to thank Mike Cunningham and Bill Rapkin, who are behind the Green Door, for producing this Facebook Live production, and hopefully, everybody heard the candidates. We appreciate all of you coming out, and we'll hopefully see you next week for the next round. And again, candidates, good luck, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Sorry for knocking over your stuff.